Well, actually, he could probably get it.
Nothing though if somebody has something contagious.
Okay.
All right. It's gotta be natural causes.
Don't worry about those natural causes.
Throw rocks, throw in the, make a tumble dry.
Oh, gosh. All right, Miss King, let's start.
Is it time?
It's time, Kylis. It is time.
Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna just switch agendas a little bit. We're gonna start with health and rec.
Okay. Call to order, health and recreation. Okay, Sidik, connect the and STA agreement with Mr. Valtico.
Basically, we are looking to enter a agreement with the USTA where we're gonna be putting up $150,000. They're gonna match that amount and that's gonna be a free grant to the state providing us with that million dollar grant to fix up tennis courts.
And we only have payments off?
Well, it's not quite a free grant, because I could say we're piecing together funding from different sources to accomplish a series of things, which one is the upgrading of tennis courts.
And I believe, do we have a presentation tonight from 15 Love?
Yes.
Okay.
Where's the tennis rackets?
I forgot the rackets, I'm sorry.
We're gonna have you come down at this hour so you can be on TV.
Yes, oh, boy.
Thank goodness. Thank you. I think you have this all in front of you, so I just have a bigger copy, but if anyone needs to be, give me a couple extras. So I'm gonna make this kind of brief. We were here in front of you a couple years ago about redoing Michigan Avenue, those tennis courts. That was a little different. That was very mission central for 15 Love. So that's, you know, right in the heart of the inner city and 15 Love raised all of those funds and we were just asking for your permission to kind of do the work there. We did it, it's gorgeous, I hope you've all been by. It gets so much use from the community, it's really a wonderful site. So it's also increased the overall tennis participation and really helps out with this Central Park project. So Central Park is a site that's critical to 15 Love as well. We actually partnered with the sport camp there. We worked with a bunch of kids two days in the mornings and then we have our general program two days in the evenings all summer long there as well. So we're easily serving well over 200 kids every summer through our free tennis and education and life skills program at Central Park alone. But Central Park is really central to a lot of tennis in the area. But just a little background, you have kind of our mission, which is to reach out to the inner city, to the capital region. I gave you just some other basics on 15 Love and I don't need to go through, you know, you can all look through this stuff, I'm not gonna keep you forever. So, but we have, a lot of people think of us as just free tennis. It's really, tennis is the way that we reach out to kids. It's really to, every tennis lesson includes what we call off part, which is a life skill session. So we're talking to them about drugs, we're talking to them about education, we're doing it in a fun way. So we talk to them about the geography and government and we talk to them about the environment and we do it with, you know, we use these foam tennis balls and they bring in used water bottles and they do bowling with it and we talk about how many times, how many water bottles are using, how many times that goes around the earth every year. It's like two and a half times, all the water bottles that we use. And so, you know, we try to make it fun and interesting and engaging for the kids and it really works. So our numbers have just, I kind of pulled out our proposal for Michigan Avenue and our numbers have increased by hundreds since just two years ago, just in Schenectady. So, you know, we're really doing what we can, you know, catching them on the tennis court and really getting them into some strong additional programs. So we have a lot of kids from Schenectady who are in our excellent schools who are playing year round, they're going on to college. And I just told you very quickly, we have some graduates, I just got, one of our graduates from Schenectady is now in Texas. He went through Teach for America, you know, wrote all his recommendations there and he's, he actually just became a reverend in Texas. So he's our only reverend and came from Schenectady. And he's got, you know, just a gorgeous family. But we've had a couple of teachers come out of Schenectady, a couple of engineers come out of Schenectady. So we have, we had two lawyers from Albany, him heading from Schenectady, we'll work on them, CPA from Albany, so we'll push our kids in those directions. But you're, throughout the region, 15 Love is regional, so we serve about 4,200 kids throughout the region each year. And like I mentioned, in Schenectady, we're up at about 1750, just in Schenectady. Eighty-two percent of our kids come from low to moderate income homes. And one, that's kind of stayed static. I've been with 15 Love for longer than I want to admit now. But for about 14 years and that's kind of stayed static. What hasn't is female headed households, which I think is interesting. That was always below 50 percent when I started. It's up at 60, up around there now. But, you know, that's, that's what we're doing. So that's, those are the kids we're serving and we're doing whatever we can. Wednesday, Schenectady schools, I believe, have school, all these schools, but we're running an event Wednesday from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. It's a free book giveaway. We do have kids coming in, they'll periodically drive from Schenectady to come to these. So our, we have a gardening program there, we do have kids from Schenectady that come to the gardening program as well throughout the summer, but there'll be an open house to be able to take vegetables from the garden on Wednesday, they'll get as many free books. We literally give them a bag and they just, so they can't carry anymore, Phillips, a huge. So we collect used children's books all year, we hand them out in our summer program, so every kid at Central Park and Michigan Avenue and Jerry Burrell, they're all getting free books all summer long. So, and then we have these two just big giveaway days where they can come, you know, get all the reading they need to get in, which is really helpful because a lot of the kids that we serve don't have books at home, you know, and their teachers want them, they have them every night, so it works out. Here's, there's also just a list of all the locations, there are 18 different locations in Schenectady. So I gave you a list of all those locations and the people that we're partnering with here. Moving on to the Central Park thing more, is, the 15 Love is kind of a, we're a member of the USTA, we're in the eastern section, so Schenectady's in the eastern section and I'm, I'm on the USTA's board personally, but we're partnering with them. The USTA are the ones providing the funding this time. So they're providing $150,000 to re, to renovate the Central Park tennis courts. It's critical for them because they do a lot of, they like to do sectional events here and they did do them until this year. And fortunately, because of the condition of the tennis courts, they had to move their sectional events to Westchester. And nobody else today likes when things move down to Westchester. We wanna keep them up here. So they serve all of New York State, Schenectady's really central, so it's a nice location. So they've committed $150,000 in the matching, so they will pay half of the cost, up to $150,000 to redo the courts. But they, there's so much that goes on here in Schenectady besides their tournaments that I've kind of listed, the current utilization, I kind of listed that all out for you, their tournaments here. There's so much league fight, just people from the region coming nonstop, just, everybody wants to play at Central Park. And now Michigan Avenue, actually, because we have the restroom there, people actually really like the quiet there, so they, they do like both facilities, but everybody kind of likes Central Park. So, and then the Schenectady High School, Miss Union High School and Ciena College all use Central Park as their home base. The economic impact, I think, is what honestly surprised me the most. I only put together the economic impact for the USTA sectional tournaments because I have the numbers on those. I didn't put it together, all of the high school sectionals for boys and girls are held at Central Park, all of these league matches, and I gave you the numbers of people coming in, there's like 244 people each week that come to Schenectady to play these league matches, obviously some of them are from Schenectady, but they're regional people coming in. I didn't give you any numbers associated with that. This is only the nine special tournaments that the USTA for 2015 had to move to Westchester because of the condition of the courts. And so if you look at this, where it says economic impact, it's $666,250, the economic impact at Schenectady, just for those nine events. And that only includes their lodging and their meals. We know for a fact that they like to come and have fun.
Yeah.
So we know for a fact that they are out, you know, a lot of them like to go shopping. I realize some of that revenue is not Schenectady County, but they, they like to go out at night. I know they're, they're going out and probably spending more than that per diem that I put in there, that I found for Schenectady County, on their meals and having fun at the end of the night. So, and also I only counted the players, in the case of the juniors, one parent. Usually even the adult players are bringing somebody with them and the junior players are usually bringing a whole family. So in all honesty, this number is probably much higher. But I didn't wanna mislead you, so I gave you what's basic. But, and like I said, this is only those nine tournaments. So really the economic impact for Schenectady through the Central Park tennis courts, I think, is probably massive. If those courts were to slip into complete disrepair, there are two courts, really three courts currently that are completely unplayable, unsafe. And then there's a line that, the courts, there is a, a thing, a diagram here, that left side, the front four courts and the back five courts on that left side, you can't see it, I have it in color on mine, they're in red, but there, there's a step down, so you can kind of see mine, it's red. So there's a step down right here and the way the fence is, it, it wasn't secured along the concrete curve, so it bows out, there's a huge space, and I can fit my foot in there. I'm shocked that a child hasn't really been injured, you know, running back for a ball or something and just dropped their foot right back there. I'm amazed that no one's really been hurt in that way. Last year, the trees, the overhang trees, which is part of this, the tree removal is part of this plan, a branch was hanging over the courts, literally by about two minutes missed a child who was playing a tournament. Just, it came down and right onto the tennis court right where they were playing. So we know that there are safety issues at the court that really have to be addressed, even if this whole project isn't done, there are safety issues that have to be addressed for it to be, for anyone to continue playing there. But if we want the USTA tournaments to come back, we want the leagues to continue to play there, then the full project really has to be done, or they're gonna stay in Westchester, unfortunately. I wanted to get through this really quickly and I'm happy to give you time to ask questions. Just so you know what the project will do, that left side that I showed you, those red courts, they are getting milled and completely reconstructed. And then there'll be new fencing around the entire facility. The blue courts over here, they're not in as bad shape, so these will just get a heavy repair with fabric and everything and then everything will be resurfaced. So currently, it'll just be, these will be remilled, this'll, these four will turn into five, so we're adding a port to the facility as well, which will help with large tournaments and stuff. And then these will get repaired, but new fencing, because it, we just don't think it'll look good. The fencing is pretty bad all the way around, so we don't think that the fencing, just on one side, would look right. So the fencing will go around the whole facility. We talked about maybe adding a large, if these courts ever do need to be redone, adding in a large door here so that machinery can get in, so the fencing doesn't have to be redone if these are ports, you know, have to be milled at some point. So we're possibly gonna add in a large fence door. It also includes adding a shed that will have an overhang for a tournament desk and it'll have some electricity on the outside for their computer and stuff. And also two rest, unisex restroom stalls, so it's like two separate doors, a wall in between. I know we have a lot of discussion about what exactly this means, so it's not, you're not walking into one place with two stalls, two separate rooms. And at the facility and then possibly an extra space within that area for an ice machine and like a spigot for water for the, for the large events. Those would be under lock and key, the person, Jim Neal run to Central Park, if any of you are familiar with him. So he'll have the keys to that and then they'll only be open for large events, other than when the facility is open by a city staff person in the summer. So they won't be just generally open. So I think that's all I have for you. And if you have questions, I am happy to answer them.
Does anyone have questions?
Yes.
What is the overall cost for this court check?
It's about $300,000. So there are some costs that we aren't completely sure about. The bathrooms are a little bit of a mystery. The, we've been working with the city engineer and with others to figure out exactly where they can be placed. The placement was a little bit of an issue and what the exact cost of getting all that in is, there's a little bit of a question mark, but where we added in just for the restrooms, I did just a kind of preliminary budget and I had about $30,000 just for the restroom portion, which I'm hoping is safe.
So this is additional to the $300,000?
No, no, no. It's included.
No, this is the hard part.
Yeah. So if there are additional funds that need to be raised, that's where 15 Love is gonna come in as well. So we, we will help to raise if we have to additional funds, we're hoping we can get this done in the $300,000 budget. Because 15 Love, just having raised $300,000 for tennis courts in this city, we think it could be tough to raise private funds again, at least using the context that we have. But there have been some people who have made personal donations or are willing to make personal donations to make this happen, so I think we'll be able to do it if that cost was any higher, but it, we're hoping it will.
So thank you. So Mr. Mayor, I suppose you, is this $150 coming out of the grant with some of them in stack?
Yeah.
Or where's the $150 coming from?
City Schenectady funds.
City Schenectady funds. All right. And then we talked about, I know the Michigan Avenue project had a partnership with the county as well. Is there any way you can contact the county to maybe, you know, maybe if there's anything accessible with this to partner with those folks?
We look at those relationships, that some of the Michigan Avenue that we use, city crews and what you say, some county equipment to do some of the site work. We're looking to do that.
At this project.
In this project, we're gonna come in with some of the heavy equipment, do some of the, again, what we call site preparation for the other contractors that will come in, so we're looking to leverage the money as much as we can. And there, last, we're looking to use tight capital reserves on this.
Capital reserves.
Capital reserves, yes. So just to clarify, you're saying that the $150 could be some in kind that would be doing with it, be total cash?
At this point, we're committing $150,000, but to make sure we do the project right and leverage it, you know, and we're talking about the bathrooms and some of the other things might go over, by using some of the city crews in there to do preparation work, takes the pressure off the overall budget, so that there would be a little bit of flexibility. I know these projects we get in, there's always something somebody wants to add, so that the, the numbers look very tight. The way they are now, next spring when we're starting it, people will want a little bit more or there'll be some surprise, they'll need a little bit extra.
So just to follow, so we're looking to start this in the spring of 16, so that it's completed for the tennis season?
Yeah, we're looking to see if the frost goes out of the ground and mobilize on this, because there's actually a tournament that's coming in June.
There are, I think they're gonna not schedule the June, just to be safe, that made them a little nervous. But they're gonna schedule the later 2016.
Tell them to schedule that June tournament.
Go ahead and schedule it. For the mayor.
But they, the other thing I should have mentioned is the, USTA is willing to commit 10, even 20 years of bringing this tournament back if the courts are in playable condition.
Very good.
That's good.
And that was, I believe that's put into the contract that the USTA and the city would be answering.
Very good. I'll move this man chair if there's no more questions.
Well, I haven't asked a question yet.
Oh, so there's no other questions, is there? I'll move it.
Are there any other questions or anything? Let me just, so we're, we're, with this, the man has, we're committing to the $150,000 that is in the reserve funds already? Just wanted to make sure that we catch it all there.
Have it undercover.
What's that?
We have it undercover.
Oh, you have it undercover, right.
Under the mattress.
Smooth, not second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Yes.
All right. Next on the agenda is authorization for fall special rates for Schenectady golf course. Mr. Wallace and company?
Hello. Very well.
So we're trying to present a, a fall special for golf course. Historically, in the months of October, November, a number of rounds declines for, as you can see in the letter that I printed up for Chris. It could, it could be a number of reasons. People start heading south, schools back in session, other golf courses are also promoting their facilities for a much lower rate. In fact, I get an influx of phone calls right about this time of year from various people wondering what our fall rates are and my answer is if we don't have. So they say, okay, and then usually they take their business elsewhere. So this way, I think we can stay competitive and kind of maybe boost our rounds for the fall. And I'm looking to just start this on October 1st to the time we close. So we're looking for about a month and a half time, but I think it would be a nice promotion. You know, it's a good time to just try and see if it works, good experimentation, see if it works. Friday, Saturday and Sunday, our rates at the golf course increase a couple dollars, which is why you see the rate increase for those three days. So it'll be, it'll just a little bit, be a little bit more on the weekend days as opposed to during the weekdays. But I think it's a pretty good deal, but it only pertains if it's four players. And I like the fact that it would just be a flat rate, so you don't get into the, you know, I have three residents and one non-resident, or two residents, two non-residents, it's just one flat rate, it's same for everybody. Whether they're a senior, veteran or not, it's the same rate for everybody. Yes?
So you said, we have, you apparently have rates for four of them?
Yeah, well, right now, it's, right now, it's just billed as an individual.
Okay.
There is no current special in place at all. This would just be a brand new promotion that we're like to run.
All right. So what would the normal rate be for four non-resident players to ride?
For a resident, right now would be 30...
Non-resident?
Non-resident? Peak resident or non-resident to ride on the weekends is $44.
During the week?
On the weekend. During the week, it's 42. So it only increases $2.
Is it car, that includes car?
That includes car, yeah.
Other questions?
Do you have any competitors rates, the other golf courts charging?
Currently, I don't, because they change all the time, but I can get those for you.
I would like Monday through Thursday and the Friday through Saturday.
Specials or rates?
Well, rates or special, they are.
Yeah, I mean, I have the rates currently from other golf courses listed in our brochure. So when people come in, they can actually see that ours are cheaper than everybody else's, but I don't know what their fall rates are just yet. They're all different everywhere.
Right. But I think that is important information that we, so we know if we're being competitive or if we're like really, really being a little bit lower, it could be a little bit more.
Yeah, I can get that information to you and send it to you.
Yeah, you can have a few comparisons, that would be...
Yeah? Yeah, I can do that for you.
Other questions? So at this point, you're asking for us to give resolution on this, right? So I'm comfortable as long as we, you know, as long as we can take a look at the rates and make sure that we're, you know, within our competitors.
Yeah.
If our price ranges are, so based on having that information by next week, if everybody else is comfortable with that.
I do know there's two courses up in the Clifton Park area that are public facilities, Eagle Press and Fairways of Half Moon, and they run a very similar rate. I think Fairways of Half Moon does, does that special, but they also include soup and sandwich.
Oh, cool, yeah.
But they can do that because they don't lease their restaurant like we do.
Oh, okay.
So they, they all have different promotions, they add some kind of lunch special in there or just a flat rate of golf. But see, now this is the time in fall, people like to start traveling. It's a great time to play golf, it's scenic, leaves are changing, so everybody's starting to kind of bounce around, they wanna see different golf courses. So I see a lot of new faces this time of year that I don't normally see throughout the year.
That's good.
So that's why I'd like to kind of get that through. I will get that information to you ASAP.
Yeah, so that man chair, I'll move it.
Oh, okay. So how do you, so this is something new, how do you plan how to promote it, so that people know that here's a rate that...
Yeah, I would start putting it on our website. We have a Facebook page and I would also start promoting it and then I would promote it around the club. But like I said, I get so many phone calls that...
So you're going to be sponsored to your customers?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah. I mean, I would love to maybe put some in the paper if we can, if that's possible, I would like to put something like that.
Do you have like a mailing list of all your customers, that you can mail flyer, special flyers onto?
I don't really have an email list, no.
Or mailing address?
I could get one together, I could start trying to get one together. I currently don't have that, no.
Do I wanna look into that?
Yeah.
For next year.
Yeah.
No, I just think it's good that they're doing this and that, the more people know that it's...
Yes, yeah.
Forgot, so thank you. Mr. Brown?
Madam Chair, might I suggest that all of us share it on Facebook?
Yeah.
Social media, social media is a great way to get the word out also, so I think as council members, we could all, we could all assist in our city, in our city council.
That would be good if the council put together a couple foursomes and went up and played around.
Okay, I'm, I'm good for that.
All right.
Maybe you don't have to take a name.
So it's been moved off the list?
Yeah, sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Anyone just share it on flyer, so we can pass it around?
Yeah.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to come before health and recreation?
If not, it's a 10-12.
Motion adjourned.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
For your term?
I'd like to call to order Public Service and Utilities. We have one item on the agenda, final review from our public hearing, Chapter 151, expectations and Chapter 228, Senate 103.
I don't quite know how we wanna handle this item. So we did meet with National Grid, both myself and Mr. Valtico and David Frank, we met with their representatives. They did have some questions, I would say that they were all pretty benign in nature, it was just clarifications and clarifications of terms and some just kind of suggestions on how we can word things and make things a little bit clearer. Carl, have you had a chance to put that together in summary and how we wanted to proceed with it going forward?
I haven't really really wanted, like since clarifications, I know there's one substantive term we've been talking about, yet this is the word, we want things done in three feet of curve, they're looking for two feet, and I know Mr. Wallace is valuing that, I think based on the conversation. Anything else popped out to me that was a reason that we shouldn't move forward and we can have a final draft of legislation that will be substantially the same as with the council at a public hearing on by the end of this week?
So you don't feel the need to hold it for two weeks?
I don't.
No.
So you said that there was, that the one change that you proposed was pretty significant, is that you're including that in your final draft of this?
I can think it was significant, that was the only thing, they asked for clarification on a number of items and that's the only part of the legislation that they wanted to change from what we had. So I think that's something, it's a technical thing that Long would take, I would give a recommendation on.
Mr. President?
When will we be able to see the final draft? Can we have it by Thursday or Friday? So we have time.
Definitely by Friday before the weekend.
I'll move it.
A second? On favor?
Aye.
Anything else to come before public service meeting?
Yes, I will move that, sorry.
Now, second, on favor?
Aye.
Finance?
Finance, okay. Finance Committee to Order, Call for Public Hearing 2016 Budget, exciting times!
What's the time? It's that time of the year.
It's getting to be that time.
So what you have before you is a legislative request to start the public hearing process for the 2016 budget and in the request lays out the respective dates that are being proposed for the fall public hearing, should open hearing and then review thereafter.
Questions, comments? I know that I will be working with Ms. DeGenova this week to finalize the budget meeting schedule. schedule, and we're all on the edge of your seats waiting. So, everybody's good?
Yeah, I'll have to move this.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Anything else to come before Finance Committee this evening?
Motion, Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to call to order City Development and Planning. First item on the agenda is a revocable permit for SCC at 201 State Street, the Kendall Building.
Hello, what we have in front of us is revocable permit number 598 for the Schenectady County Community College, which is at the Kendall Building. It is a typical blade sign that you can see on, I believe it's the fourth page, that says SCC Kendall. It has gone through planning, has gone through, I believe, historic commission, it's been approved on all the levels, and it is in keeping with the nature of what we are doing downtown, so.
Questions? Okay, move, second, all in favor? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Calling for a public hearing on Water Street Abandoned, Mr. Strickland.
This is the necological step in the expansion of Liberty Park that will occur next year. And so Water Street has been predominantly been shut down for over a year when the gate went up over at Washington Avenue, only a small portion of it remains open. The plan would be to closing Paris Street down, so it's just a public hearing, engineering has reviewed this. The utilities and systems under that road will remain there, water, sewer, whatever's there, but they'll be under the park, and they'll still be accessible as repairs needed. But so the plan would be a call for public hearing, the public hearing would be on Tuesday, October 13th, and then a discussion on October 19th, and a final vote, see fit on October 26th.
Questions? Mr. President?
Is there any basic time of guess that berms will be removed in that area?
We're, right now, I'm working it out with parks to make sure that we try and do some of that this fall, pre-development, have to get it by ship out to convince them that the berms that were placed there in the eighties, there won't be any historic significance with their removal. So that shouldn't take too long.
Ship out, you just said a mouthful.
Yes.
Okay, there's just, you know, I, there's increased concern about activities that happen in that area, so...
I directed staff to cut the wishes down and start, about the actual berms.
What?
It's going to be the last week, it'll be down there, it'll be done fairly shortly.
Terrific. Thank you, good news.
All right, item number three, doing ceremonial resolution for childhood cancer. I'm sorry, oh, I'm going to take a motion to approve that. Okay, seconded all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Ceremonial resolution for childhood cancer awareness, one? Move it, okay. All in favor? All right. And also ceremonial resolution for Schenectady's The Place. I think you've all heard the song, we will have it, it will be presented to us next Monday night. And I'm just thinking of, at this point, a resolution just commending the folks and recognizing it, and I don't know that we want to go as far to make it the official song just yet, but at least to get it out there, it's really neat. So, all right, so, Ms. Portillo, second, Ms. Ferrari, all in favor? Aye. Item number five is again a letter of support for the New York Folklore Grant Application. I think to everybody's knowledge, there's no other group applying for this money, so, and Ellen McHale, of course, was here two weeks ago to present that, so if no one has any objections, I'll undertake a motion to approve that. To do the letter?
I'll move it.
Okay. Second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. The City of Schenectady's Second Annual Manufacturing Week. Mr. Pedman, you wanted to say a few brief words?
Briefly, so just looking for an opportunity to promote Schenectady's Second Annual Manufacturing Week, it's coming up, kicks off on National Manufacturing Day, which is Friday, October 2nd. So we'll be doing two events at my side, including a women's manufacturing panel event at 9 o'clock, followed by a press conference hosted by Mayor McCarthy at 10. So just looking for an opportunity to promote that at the same house.
So they will be doing a much, you know, more involved presentation to us Monday night, next Monday night. So, all right, so I don't think we have to move anything on that. The mayor had one other item that I think that he passed out. Mayor, you wanted us to explain that again for anyone who wasn't here.
One of the governor's regional economic development councils, the regions compete for funding, tax credits, incentives, grants at the state level. This next round, the government has put out a billion and a half dollars, which three regions will be awarded $500 million. Very significant amount, and then the other regions will get their kind of regular appropriation. They're developing a regional plan and looking for resolution to generic support from legislative bodies within the Capitol District Regional Economic Development, region which goes from Dallas to Valley, going up to Saratoga. So I'm asking the council to consider doing a resolution. I apologize, I forwarded a fairly large packet from the mail to the courts office this afternoon, which you can review. So it is not 100% cast in stone, and also the nature of it, where the sub-level confidentiality, because we had a brilliant idea, announced it publicly, you know, the sovereign tier in West York might put it in their application. To this point, it's worked, and the generic resolution supports the application, which has been quite been finalized, through some information being sent in. Any specific questions? Here we can, they're back around, they're details.
No, I think, but I will say that I'm familiar with this process, because I've attended some of the meetings with all these Schenectady tour, I've been doing, and there is a document out there that doesn't give away a lot of things, so. So I think it's outstanding, and based on the general outline that I've seen so far, that, you know, there's, I think we have a good opportunity to get that. So certainly, one, yes, give a letter of support.
Okay. You move it?
I certainly will.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The rest of the items will be in executive session, so at this point, whether to recess the committee, or just go into executive session and go through those. Yeah, let's just go into executive session. I'll take a motion, I'll undertake a motion to go into executive session, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.